Other children, all other adults in our town to be able to ride down to the town center and do all the other fun things, but go to the library because I think it's a focal point of the community and I think we need it. I see lots of mentions of sports facilities, parks, commercial sites, and of course residential, but I have seen nowhere on the web mention of a library. We've also gone to the Louisville Library for plenty of meetings, for example art shows, genealogy clubs, Lego clubs, and I think it would be a treasure for our town to have a place for people to meet for things like that. Therefore, I urge the planning commission to consider keeping a spot available for a library in the near future, and I'd be glad to work on it. I just would like to speak out about that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boyds. Any additional public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am?
I'm not quite as tall as he is, but I still have to adjust this.
I think it's good idea.
My name is Teresa Clark, and I live at 765 East Wiggins Street here in Superior. As a quick side note, I support what he said about the library. That would be a good thing for us to have. The other reason that I'm here this evening is to speak to you about not the components of PDP Amendment Three, but the process by which it's going to be approved. PDP Amendment Two had in it a grading plan that graded away the 250-foot buffer that was guaranteed to Superior residents in the 1998 annexation agreement. I'm having a little bit of a no-confidence vote personally at this point in time regarding this commission and the town board because somehow that plan got, that grading plan was submitted and approved, or maybe not approved, but somehow or another it became what happened. And it is not what should have happened because the 1998 annexation agreement clearly states the buffer to be 250 feet. In fact, it states that it's a wildlife corridor and that everything that happens within that needs to sustain the wildlife corridor for raptors, and because it's a raptor wildlife corridor, that means the prairie dogs have to stay because the raptors eat the prairie dogs. And I don't need to tell you guys about the food chain because we all studied it in the fifth grade. My concern is that if you are, I'm also the person who presented 31 letters from residents to the town board stating that we really would like that everybody, the planning commission and the town board, stop approving anything until this issue with the buffer is resolved, until it's put back to the size that was guaranteed to residents in the annexation agreement, and then until, well, because it's been so far removed, and then until we have a landscaping plan to put trees and indigenous grasses and things back into it to support the wildlife that was there. So now regarding the process. It's my understanding that this evening you all are to review PDP Amendment Three, and one of the items that we requested, 31 citizens requested, is that we just stop approving things until we get this buffer issue resolved. It needs to be restored to its size and it needs to be landscaped. So this evening, it's my understanding that you're going to be charged with probably, and you will do, probably one of two things. You will either say, yes, we approve PDP Amendment Three, and this will get fast-tracked up to the town board, and then I'm going to have to have this conversation again with them, or you all have the opportunity here to say, wait a minute, no. We have an unresolved issue. There's a lot of confusion about how things have happened to date, so let's put the brakes on PDP Amendment Three until we get this issue with the buffer worked out. There's a third option of making your approval of PDP Amendment Three contingent upon restoring the buffer and giving the town board the orders that you've instructed the development company Ranch Capital to do an FDP for the landscaping. So of the three options, residents want the brakes put on all of this until we have an understanding of what's going on to restore the buffer. And I thank you for your time. Do you have any questions of me?
Ms. Clark, I do. And thank you for your comments and your presentation. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that I understand how the issue you're raising relates to the matter that we're going to address in the public hearing.
Of course.
And I think I get the idea that we could hold up further development until the buffer zone issue is resolved, but my question more precisely is, do the changes set forth in PDP Amendment Three directly impact the buffer zone that you're referring to?
I apologize to you that I don't have a very direct answer for that. So PDP Amendments One, Two, and Three have all had a road that went through the buffer zone and then went down through, I think it's Avenue C, so it goes through the buffer zone on the northernmost 50 feet of it, and then it cuts through the Anderson property. My personal feelings are that there should be no drawings regarding the Anderson property because the Andersons own the Anderson property. And so the part of the road that's in the northernmost 50 feet of the buffer needs to be taken out. So to that regard, yes, it does have something to do with PDP Amendment Three. Likewise, the grading plan that was in PDP Amendment Two, which is the one that delineated the drop-off and excavation into the buffer, my concern is, is that if you all approve PDP Amendment Three, that that will be in default an improvement of PDP Amendment Two. Sorry, this is too many initials for me.
It's okay.
I'm really doing my best. So yes and no. It's not about the center of the town. It's not actually of the roads that are going on down the hill, but my conversation does have something to do with the details in PDP Amendment Three concerning the buffer.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, and Ms. Clark, thank you for your comments and for your email. With respect to the grading plan that was included in PDP Two, if I understand the concern that the residents have with the grading plan, it's that what was included in PDP Two, which was approved back in 2014, that was sort of the genesis of the incursion into the buffer zone, which caused the work to be done with respect to the grading, which you contend violates the annexation agreement from 1998. Is that correct? Or was it something that occurred subsequent to PDP Two? I'm just trying to understand where the problem lies.
Yeah, I understand your confusion because I think the town board and the conversations between myself and town management, and then the conversations between the town board and the town attorney regarding exactly what was approved and what was approvable are kind of cloudy. So in the plan development, that was the first set of plans that the, not you all because some of you are new to this, but the planning commission received and approved, it had a grading plan in it that had a really gradual delineation that seemed relatively harmless. And that is what the town approved, or the town board of trustees approved, and that's what received a lot of citizen input. In fact, 1,000 residents signed a petition supporting this 250-foot buffer for that. So what I'm stumbling upon is you've asked about the grading plan that was approved in PDP Amendment Two, and the grading plan in PDP Amendment Two, from my understanding, wasn't supposed to be there because there had already been an approved grading plan in the plan development. So the first document that came through the planning commission and the town board. So I'm happy to answer your question. It's just that there was nothing, the grading plan that resulted in the excavation of the buffer wasn't supposed to be there in the first place. And I can understand how there's a lot of head scratching and perhaps finger pointing about how it was inserted into there, but its approval is questionable in my estimation.
So just a follow-up, then, notwithstanding what was approved when, whether it was in the first plan or in Number Two, you contend that the work that has been done thus far, the grading work that has been done, does not comply with what was approved in PDP Number Two? Right? It's more severe than?
No, no. And see, that's the whole confusion. So the grading plan that's in PDP Amendment Two was snuck in because it is not reflection, it's not a reflection upon the initial plan development. So there was an initial plan development that was approved, and then there was PDP Amendment One, and then there was PDP Amendment Two. No grading plan in PDP Amendment One, but there was a grading plan in PDP Amendment Two, and according to the town attorney, at least from what I interpret from her to say in the October 26 meeting, the grading plan is not supposed to be in a PDP amendment. It's supposed to be in an FDP. So somehow the process here went feed over teakettle. So I'm really not trying to be difficult in not answering your question. What I am trying to say is, I am not the one to say whether what was, you know, approved in PDP Amendment Two or how it happened. I am the one to say that based on my interactions and my observations of the town board and the town attorney, was that the grading plan that resulted in the severe excavation of the buffer delineated in PDP Amendment Two wasn't supposed to be there.
Okay.
And if you really, if you have any other questions about that, I encourage you to speak to the town attorney because she, I mean, I understand, you guys are sitting up there. I'm a citizen recanting meetings and meetings to you, but it might serve you all just to send her an email and go, hey, what's going on? Any other questions?
Additional questions? I just had a follow-up. Is your group engaging with town staff and town council and the town board on these issues? It sounds like you are.
Yes, and so you've asked about town staff, town council, and town?
The board.
The board, yeah. So we are with the board, and we are with staff, but if we're to interact directly with the attorney, then that implies that we're going to sue the town. So we have reserved that because we would rather this, I mean, it's really not that hard. There's the annexation agreement that gave us the rules, and we either followed them or we didn't. And if we didn't and we made a mistake, then we go, we made a mistake and we fix it. So I don't personally feel the need to engage town council with this because there's a way to make it right with all of that.
I shouldn't have slipped in council.
Okay.
You shouldn't be afraid of attorneys. No, but are you, you are working with town staff and the town board to try to get some remedy to the issues that your group has spotted?
Right.
Okay.
We are. And I wanted to let you all know that we had approached the town board and requested that they stop approving anything just until we have a satisfactory resolution about the buffer. We're not saying that things can't happen down the line, but right now, there's been a mistake and we have an opportunity to fix it, so let's fix it and then move on.
As we stand here now, has anybody said we're not going to fix it?
There's a distinction between silence about the matter and an actual statement of, we're not going to fix it. There's not been a statement saying, we're not going to fix it, because I suspect that would really upset a lot of people, especially the people that negotiated the 1998 annexation agreement, the thousand people that did that. But the silence right now is, your guess is as good as mine.
Okay. I have one additional follow-up question. With respect to the 1998 ordinance, the annexation agreement, the land that was included within that annexation agreement, I understand that includes at least some of the buffer, but the buffer is greater than that which was conveyed in the annexation agreement. Is that correct?
So the, there's one other document, the, oh God, it's online, that states that the buffer is to be at least 300 feet, and it delineates, you know, the landscaping of it. That document has, from what I understand, it's kind of a set of guidelines or recommendations. It's not legally binding to any party. And so regarding the buffers discussed in the annexation agreement, the confusion initially was that, so there's the fence that, bear with me here, I know I've taken more than my five minutes, but I'm doing my best to answer your questions. So there's the fence on the north side of Rock Creek that is on the north side of Brandon, Wiggins, and East Pittkin. And it was initially thought that the buffer was supposed to start at that fence, but that's actually incorrect. The buffer, there's an easement between that fence and the barbed wire fence that allows a water-right owner the ability to drive in and maintain and service pipes so that they get their water. So the buffer really starts at the barbed wire fence and then extends another 250 feet. So I'm not sure what your information was about bigger, smaller, or what it's supposed to be, but after reading this and going out with my compass and verifying it with the folks that had a lot of input into the 1998 annexation agreement, the 250 feet starts at the barbed wire fence and extends directly north. The 50, so it's 200 feet and then another 50 feet. And in that 50 feet, the 50 feet that abuts the town center development, my understanding is that's where there's supposed to be a bike trail and some lighting for the bike trail that's supposed to connect to the rest of Rock Creek to the south, and then to the bike path on the west of the development. I'm happy to answer any other questions while I'm here.
I'd just like to step away from the buffer for a moment.
So would I.
And kind of address the rest of the development. You and your group have asked that we not approve anything and that there'd be no further work on this project until there's a resolution to this, and I'm sitting here trying to figure out what benefit there would be to halting this project based on the size of it and what it means to our town.
Well, to answer that clearly, there is no develop, no benefit to the development company to stop what they're doing and restore the buffer. The benefit to the residents of the town is that we had an agreement with you, and our elected officials and our appointed officials aren't adhering to the agreement. So it makes it complicated, it makes it uncomfortable, because there were 1,000 people that went before me, I'm a Johnny come lately, to this, but there were 1,000 people that came before me, residents of Rock Creek, of Superior, that wanted the buffer. And you guys are either going to honor that agreement or you're not. And it's entirely in your purview to say, we think that the interests of the developer are more important than those of the residents, and we're here to urge you to consider that the needs of the residents are superior, if you'll pardon the pun, to that of the developer.
Despite knowing where the fault lies, because it's, to me, it's not very clear where that mistake occurred, and I think that for myself, I'd really need to have more information before I could say, let's stop this, or let's, you know, support the group that's asking for us to deny this PDP amendment.
Commissioner Stewart, I completely understand that, and one of the things that I'm standing on right now is my parents used to say, fix the problem, not the blame. So is the problem that town staff approved something that they shouldn't have? Is the problem that the developers snuck something into a document that got put before the town board? I don't think that's the relevant question. I think that the relevancy to our conversation is, what are we going to do to fix the problem? Doesn't matter who created it, and frankly, we could spend a long time trying to figure out who did what to whom and for how much, but right now is our golden opportunity to just fix it and say, wait a minute. No, the development company applied for an extension because they weren't able to complete the work that was necessary in the timeframe that they had agreed upon with the town board. Well, maybe one of the reasons that they needed an extension was because they had excavated a buffer that they weren't supposed to excavate in the first place. I'm not saying it's their fault. I'm saying it was a waste of time because the buffer was supposed to remain untouched. So now, yes, we are all wasting everybody's time, yours, mine, the developers, but the problem has to be fixed, and we all need to waste our time until the problem's fixed.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Clark. I think we do need to continue to move on with the agenda, but very much appreciate you coming for us and helping us understand the issue that you've identified.
Thank you, and please contact me if you have any questions of me. I need to head home to the kids now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional public comment. Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is the, I guess, the consent agenda and approval of the November 10, 2015 minutes. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, deletions?
That's it.
Hearing none. Can we have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the November 10 minutes.
Commissioner Eaton, Second. Commissioner Momart's. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. And Commissioner Laces is abstained, and I think Commissioner Reese is abstained. So we'll let the minutes reflect that. Next item is the continued public hearing and approval of a resolution recommending the approval of Plan Development Plan Amendment Number Three and review and comment on vested property rights for the Superior Town Center. Do we have a presentation from the developer?
Pardon me. Good evening. My name is Randy Goodson. I'm with RC Superior with the developers of Superior Town Center. Thank you very much for your time this evening and for the time you've already spent reviewing our application. What I'd like to do, subject to your agreeing to this, is I'd like to walk through our application, and then as I'm walking through the application, I will explain the purpose of this application, and then after that, I'd like to address the two public speakers who spoke here this evening. Is that?
That's acceptable.
Okay. The, so what we have is a collection of bubbles and, oh, I think I thought I went over you. Chuck, you can take the mouse, too, if you want. And so the, a little bit of history. The project was, started with a PD plan development that was approved by the town in 2012, and then the town was focusing just on a little more than half of the property, what's known as historically as the Menkick and the Biella properties. The properties all basically north of the old railway. And then with an effort of creating a town center, we ended up getting involved, and we started working with the town in 2013 to create what is now Superior Town Center, and that process was actually the first amendment to the PD. At the time, it was called the PD amendment, being the very first, and not knowing there'd be a second or third, it was just called PDA a lot of times. And just as an aside, the PD amendment that was approved in August of 2013 does have a grading plan attached to it that shows all the grading, including the grading that was referenced here earlier in Sydney. And then while we were going through the process, a lot of people, with a lot of our meetings, the town board included, encouraged us to talk to the Awida family, who owns the Discovery Office Park, and they asked us to try to incorporate that land into the whole project, including Discovery Parkway. And I did that, and they said, sort of a summary of it was, Jesse Awida says, I spent 20 years talking to people about working together, and I'm not spending any more time or money. See if you get a project approved, and if you do, come back to me, and then we'll see, we'll try to work with you. So we did, and then as soon as the project was approved, went back, lo and behold, here we are. And then that started a process to incorporate Discovery Office Park into Superior Town Center, and that culminated in a joint development agreement and a, an agreement to exchange land. We actually gave them twice as much land as they gave us to, because we had to make all this work for them, and they had a couple of office building pads. And so to incorporate that and to make a couple of other changes, I don't recall what they were, but a few other issues that came up, that became PD Amendment Number Two. And after PD Amendment Number Two, we started referring to the original PD plan that we were involved with as PD Amendment One. But if you look at historical documents, it'll just say PDA or PD Amendment. And in an effort to continually improve upon the plan, we, and to make sure that the plan is, as, has the greatest chance of being the great place and being what we call successful, we had originally planned the town center without reliance or dependence upon the Boulder Valley Ice and Indoor Sports facility. It's a huge facility. We wanted to accommodate it. We were encouraged to accommodate it, and, but they, after being accommodated, they had to pull together $25 million to build 171,000 feet. And we knew that was a big challenge. Through that process, we had no obligation to, but we got more and more married to them and more and more enticed by the prospect of their great facility. And it took them a little more than a year longer than they had expected to get their financing together. To encourage and put that over the hump, we gave them, didn't loan them, we didn't invest, we gave them a direct cash contribution of $1.5 million to help them close their loan. And at that time, that occurred in May of this year. And, and at that time, that occurred in May of this year. At that time, once they closed their loan, we went back and said, okay, now, what is Superior Town Center? Because now we have this facility. They, the commitment, by the way, when we, the way we set it up is we said, we'll be the last one and a half million in. To close your loan, we'll put in one and a half million. And, and that had, that had to be concurrent with them starting construction, so that the loan couldn't be terminated and we lose the one and a half dollars. So, they, they started construction, we happened to have two or three of the worst months of rain beyond what was anticipated. But when, when they started construction, then we went out to our own planning firm, our own team, let's say, that we worked on the original plan. And then we hired, we interviewed a number of other urban planners, and ultimately paid two urban planners to have a blind competition, really, to reimagine and to make sure that we weren't influencing something, we just wanted to kind of tear it up and say, what would you do if you could do anything? And, that process included a national urban planning firm and a western region urban planning firm. And then we did the same thing with our team, led by MIG Winston out of Boulder, who was our part of, key part of our original team, and who was in fact hired by the town in two thousand eleven and twelve to create the original PD. And, a lot of great ideas came, but one common element was that the, the access, the, the action space and the area of focus of Superior Town Center is absolutely changed by the presence of Boulder Valley Ice and Indoor Sports and by that entrance. And, that led to a reconsideration of what Main Street should look like, how it should connect to Boulder Valley Ice and Indoor Sports, where should the town plaza be, and, and then a few things related to that. So that was the first main thing. And then, so that's one thing that we'll talk about tonight. And then the other main thing is the town, from two thousand thirteen, right after the project was approved, the town formed a task force to talk about parks. And the parks, that, there's three primary parks, and obviously numbered one, two, and three perhaps, in case you follow that. Park one is the park north of Coal Creek, sort of next to McCaslin and the future extension of Marshall Road. And then Park two is south of Coal Creek, but along Coal Creek and between the project essentially and Coal Creek, where the big full-size outdoor field will be. And then Park three is really kind of around the cemetery. By the way, part of planning area of PD Amendment Two was a realization that that park was too small. And so it included a few minor changes that ended up increasing that park from a half an acre to about three and a half acres of usable area. And, the, so, so the second thing was that plant, the park planning task force, and the town hired a park landscaping consultant, they came back and said, we think that you need to change the way you interface with the park. You need a parking lot, and you need to move the street, so the street is right next to the park, and there's a lot of parking next to the park. We had a bunch of ideas about the original plan, but, you know, we're about making this as good as we can. So not, you know, again, this is not defending the old, this is sort of figuring out how the new plan, you know, what's the right thing to do if we could make some changes. And so, those are the two primary things that drive our conversation. The rest, I would say, is cleanup or minor changes. But I'll describe, I'll discuss all of them. But I wanted you to have that, that context for what we're really proceeding with. The, so the way this is done is, the original PDA one was, let's call that the original just for the moment, because it's the first time we got involved. To change that, we had to do, with PDA Two, we, we took PDA One and we did these bubbles around whatever changed. And we just submitted the pages that changed. And so today, with PDA Three, what you're seeing is, this is from PDA Two, denotes revisions to PD Amendment Number One from PDA Two. And then this thicker line is PDA Three. Now that's getting pretty busy. So when we're done, once the, this is approved, we're gonna come back with a whole fresh set of sheets and eliminate all, all the shading and all, and all the bubbling. But I wanted to point out, so this bubbling, so all, what you're looking at now is, which the actual chains that we're discussing will be denoted in these thick bubbled areas. This is a change to the signature block of land ownership, and that's just us and the town. So, I don't think that changed, but maybe, apparently it did. But there's no, there's been no, no transaction of the property. This is just a, the legend. And then, because of the changes that we've, that we're talking about, we have, essentially what's happened is, we've taken land, we, the town plaza is a tiny, tiny bit smaller. The park area is about the same size, but the streets are bigger, because the street's been widened, which I'll show you that. So there's more land that's in right-of-way, there's a little bit less land in development area, and there's a little bit less land in the public spaces. And so that's the site data table. And then the sheet index, there's no change to that, that's bubbled from previously. And then this legal description, the project only applies to the land that we own. Block twelve does not, is not related, block twelve has been sold, most of block twelve has been sold or is under contract for sale.
Switch them for you if you want, or if you've got it.
Was that, is that the same sheet? Okay, thank you. So, this is the clean, I guess we've already done that. So this is the clean sheet, what this sheet would look like if you got rid of all the bubbles and all the highlights, the, the final sheet. One thing that's been added also, is it bubbled? Well, one thing that's been added is, the town also had a committee to come up with street names. And the original PD had A, B, and C, and things like that, one, two, three. And that now there's street names for a lot of the streets, but not all of them. So there's just a, a legend that helps you trans, whichever, whichever site plan you're looking at, there's a, a table that will identify the original street name and the This is showing the sheet that is being superseded. One of the things that's, there's two things happening at the same time here. We had these two different sheets. This sheet, sheet CS one point three, I'm gonna back up for a minute, and again, zoom out just for a moment. We had traditional C sheets, large sheets, that are traditional engineering sheets that encompassed a lot of detail. And then the town also had design guidelines that the town had prepared and that were modified. The town guidelines were in color, and, and the traditional engineering sheets are black and white. And so, in the effort to do everything, we thought it'd be possible to have two sheets, one black and white and one color, and to have them basically say the same thing. But they got out of sync a little bit. And so what we're doing now is we're preparing one sheet, that if you print it black and white, you can, you can decipher whether it's black and white or color. And so one sheet is now, the bottom here, it says, this is now CS one point three and Figure A. So that will be substituted out. And so whenever there's any changes, there's just one sheet that we look at. We don't have to go back and forth between two sheets. The, I'm gonna pick, of the two, these are essentially the same sheets, this one's being deleted in its entirety. This identifies with the big fat lines what's been changed. I'm gonna focus on the, the planning area two. The, and essentially, this whole area is being changed predominantly because we're gonna talk to you about flip-flopping the town plaza and moving this street up to be adjacent to the park and to now contain diagonal parking, room for diagonal parking. And then, one thing that was, that's, really, I think, a cleanup item, is, this whole area was always intended to be mixed use and to have as much commercial space. You know, the zoning is effectively for about a million square feet total of income property, because this is for-profit private, it's identified as rec space, but it's a for-profit private space. But when you add all the, all the non-residential space together, there's about a million square feet of space and five hundred hotel rooms in addition to the residential. And the plan is to put as much mixed use here, office, retail, hotel, as possible, and with residential sort of in support. And, one of the things that happens, this map ended up showing, making it look like they're individual segregated uses. So, part of this is we're going, we're saying, okay, this, we're just clarifying, this is all flex zoning. It could be any of those uses that are in the PD. We're not changing the amount of the uses in the PD, we're just saying that they can go anywhere there. And, then, and, and then just up here is the only other change. There's no, no other changes down here. These are just leftover from the exhibit that's being amended. Up here, we are pursuing, we've been pursuing for a long time discussions with hotel operators, and we have, there's additional land that cannot be parked, can't be open space, can't really be used, it's adjacent to this parcel here. And so we picked up about four thousand square feet to expand this parcel. We're trying to make this accommodate a hotel development that we're working with. And, and so that will help with that. But also, we lost, in doing this, in flip-flopping the town plaza and in increasing the size of the right-of-way, we've actually lost development land. So we just didn't lose as much, we picked up a little bit here, we just lost development land to, to do this. We added notes here that pick up the, there were some notes added, there are some notes on this exhibit and some notes on this exhibit. And so this is just transfer of notes from the prior exhibit, I believe. Is that correct, Jim? This, you can read it. Precise location of park facilities and detention ponds will be determined by future FDPs. And, that comes out of, of the sheets, that's, in this consolidated sheet that's being added. This is, just an explanation, geometry modified to accommodate town plaza relocation in addition of diagonal parking, creepy way what I've mentioned. And then the purpose of note is to allow for town to have flexible park facility design within the parks and refinement of the pond shape. No park open space boundaries changed except due to block twelve, one lot line, this up here. The, getting to parks, this may be a good time to talk about parks and kind of touch on some of these other comments. The development agreement and the plans stipulate that the town will plan the parks. And the town will process the FDPs for the parks, and then we'll build them. And we build them as the project's being built out. As we process an FDP for vertical construction next to a park facility, we build that park facility. And so the town is processing all these, the plans for all parks, sort of park slash open space. All that is done together. And so, and I'll touch more on that a little bit. So here's the consolidated exhibit that you're seeing in color, but you can interpret it whether it's in color or in black and white. This is another sheet that is modified. This is showing, this has build-two setback lines, which really is used to explain that this is an urban development. The intent is to feel urban and to have the buildings close to the sidewalks, close to the street, and, you know, because that forces architecture on the street and it creates that urban sense of place, not for the, the buildings to be set back a long ways. And one thing that we've discovered in working with town is just a clarification, which is, in our, as we've gone to more high-level, more low-level design of individual blocks and places, we want to create areas of discovery. We don't want to just have buildings all along the block, we want to let, you know, there be openings for there to be an area of discovery, a little park, maybe, maybe not a park, maybe a fountain or things like that. But we have this build-two setback line. And so we added the, a description here, that areas of discovery slash public spaces such as passageways, passeos, and courtyards may be extended from the build-to, may be excluded from the build-two setback requirements. However, the stipulation that fifty percent of the facades are required to be built at a zero setback for areas designated as requiring the zero to ten-foot setback shall still be met. So we have this concept that we were focused on the maximum setbacks, and it's, but there's a person that half of the buildings have to be right on the property line. And so where there's a setback of zero to ten feet, half of those buildings have to be at zero feet. And then the other half can be up to ten feet. So if we have areas of discovery, that, let's just say, areas of discovery would take up ten percent of a block, we would still have to have fifty percent of the buildings on that block at the zero-foot setback line. And then, there could be others as far as ten feet back. Over here, this is a change because with PD Amendment Two, that added in the connection to Discovery Parkway, we had missed, the build-two setback line had to change here because this road now connects over here like that. So we've extended that build-two setback line along this road. And then over here, there was a drafting error that was inconsistent with the other documents that described the max, the min and the maximum, zero to ten feet, as I was talking about earlier, in the design guidelines. But on this one exhibit, all of these items say min-max, 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 but there was one that just said one number, it didn't, it didn't have the min. And so we added the minimum zero to max of zero to ten feet. This is the, the as-finished product. So, I, I actually, I misspoke earlier, I thought we were, after everything was gonna be approved, we'd be doing the final sheets. We actually did, already did produce what will be the final sheets unless they're changed by, by your commission or by the board. The building mass diagram changed just for the areas, because this was the town plaza before, now we're flip-flopping it over here. And, and then we want the buildings across from the town plaza to be shorter, and so we're flip-flopping this as well. There's another clarification in the design guidelines, there's a section in the design guidelines, section one point six of the design guidelines that references hotels. And it says that there's, maybe, maybe you might call it an incentive, there's accommodation to hotels, the hotels along the thirty-sixth, they want to be visible. And so there's an accommodation that if, if you build a hotel, it can go up to ninety feet in height. And, that was changed in the, that was, when that was changed, was inserted into the design guidelines, there's a footnote here that identified a certain location for the hotel at ninety feet. And that was changed to sort of like where you build hotels, that a hotel can be ninety feet in height. So, here we're saying that we're making this consistent with the design guidelines, which, the design guidelines are part of the PD. It's not like you have a PD and design guidelines, they're all part of the same document. So we just found, found some internal inconsistencies or drafting errors. And so what this previously had is an arrow that said, the hotel can be here and it can be ninety feet in height. But based on the design guidelines, wherever you put the hotel in planning area one or two, it can be ninety feet in height. So this footnote says, refer to section one point six.
A one.
A, A one?
AI.
AI, you guys can see it better than I can. So, community design concept components of the design guidelines supplement that indicates a hotel height allowance of ninety feet in planning area two. Language advised to make diagram consistent with the design guidelines supplement and to allow for a, an interesting architectural feature within this block. We have done a lot of advanced work, particularly on block six and around either side of the town plaza. We're, we're trying to attract a very significant hotel there, so we're really hopeful. That's, changes here. And, and so that's, is that, it's not going down.
No, it's not. It's for the, there you go.
So that's the cleaned-up exhibit. And then, let's see if this is bouncing. This is not, I've worked my magic. Okay, so, in, in this instance here, one of the things that came about with the... in, in this instance here, one of the things that came about with the, this planning effort was correcting something that we did, we think it's a better solution, which was originally on the town square, town plaza. We didn't have on-street parking fronting the plaza. And, and that was because we wanted to be able to, and we've increased, increased the accommodation for this. But we have planned to block off the section of the, of Main Street opposite the town plaza. Regardless of the original plan or the current plan, it was always designed so circulation and everything would flow. And we'll have electric bollards in the streets that just turn a button and they'll pop up. So very quickly and easily you can accommodate, expanding the town plaza for those times when you have major activities that require expansion. And that of course allows it to not be so, built so big that, except for when you have major events, it, it's full and all the rest of the time it just seems vacant and empty. So it can expand and, and flux. And part of that, so what we've done here is we've bought into our consultant recommendation that the first is that the streets will be flush, so there'll be no curbs. Second is that there won't, we won't be using the traditional concrete bar stop to stop cars, we'll be using planters and, and other features, in some cases bollards, but not little things that you could trip over, you know, that are six inches off the ground. So when you're having events, people, someone's running around and tripping. So the whole street will be flush from, from Marshall Road, well, so from Marshall Road to Superior Drive, which is the entrance to Boulder Valley Ice and Indoor Sports. This two block section will be flush. And so part of making it flush is we added a street cross-section that is, that shows the diagonal parking adjacent to the town plaza. And it references also the curbless, curbless street or flush street that I've just described. Oh, this is, this is actually the street section, the last one was the curbless street, this is the street section accommodating the diagonal parking. And making another change that staff requested, previously we had eighteen foot diagonal parking, we had all, all of Main Street is diagonal parking in the original plan and in the current plan. In the original plan, it was only that one block where the town plaza is that there was not diagonal parking on that one side. We had eighteen foot for diagonal parking, twenty-four feet for the driveways, drive lanes, and then eighteen feet for diagonal parking. And staff has requested we make it twenty, twenty and twenty. And, and there's a lot of reasoned justification for that, one of which is by doing diag, by doing the flush streets the way we're doing them, we can accommodate all different types of events. If we need to accommodate a lot more parking, we can put in temporary strip, striping of perpendicular parking, not diagonal parking and get a few more parking spaces. And it's just safer for people backing out, so, so that's, we've, we've changed that. Isn't that the twenty, twenty, twenty? You want, Alex, you want to comment on this, because I think this change.
Yeah, it's eighteen, eighteen and twenty-four for the drive, the travel lanes.
What was the, can you, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure exactly.
Eighteen, eighteen and twenty-four.
It's twenty-four for the travel lanes and then eighteen for each of the parking areas.
So I have diagonal parking, but one point here is that this could be flexible. I mean, you could have, the section could actually accommodate perpendicular parking, a little narrow travel lane, could be parallel parking with bike, you know, area for bikes. It's, it's meant to be a flexible space that we would demarcate depending on seasons or events or so forth. And we'll have some movable flower beds or whatever to demarcate where the, where the parking would be, so.
Alex, you should probably identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alex Aronel, Public Works Director.
So they showed us this concept, we're trying to work through all the, the engineering and so forth. The actual parking areas would be permeable pavers, so we'll have some storage for, for storm drains and it should drain faster with the permeable pavers on, on both sides. So there are some issues, we do, we did have a bike lane on one side, one, one segment, so that it becomes a shared bike lane, but it could, with parallel parking, we could have a, you know, regular bike lane. So it's a flexible space that we're open to exploring what, what we can do with it rather than having the typical curbs everywhere with, you know, delineating, you know, the diagonal parking, whatever, so.
And I, I did misspeak, the, the center went, went to twenty-four feet. So previously the drive lanes were twenty-two feet, they went to twenty-four feet. And then again, these streets are all owned by the town. So as Alex said, the town can program them where they're flexible, you can make the parking, parallel parking and add, you know, different things. So this is creating a lot of flexibility for the town as you take over ownership of the streets.
Randy, can I ask a question on that slide before you move on? Or actually, I guess this is the preceding slide that has the cross-section with the trees. And up in the top left-hand corner, it looks like you kind of have a boulevard with trees in the middle of the lanes of traffic. And then the one down below doesn't have that. Can you kind of walk us through that?
Yes, so in this diagram here, there's a, a reference to the cross-section, so this is cross-section one. And so the entrance right off of McCaslin, there'll be a center median right off of McCaslin. And I, I actually, I'm correcting myself again, I misspoke, in that first block right there, there's no diagonal parking, but there's a center median. And, and the cars will be coming in and then it goes from roundabout to another roundabout. So we're, we're trying to dissipate, to reduce the speed of the vehicles coming in. And then this is cross-section two over here, so once we get to the first or the second block in, then my earlier statements are accurate with the diagonal parking. And then when we get to the third and fourth blocks in, that will relate to the new, the new cross, oh, no. That will relate to, oh, that relates to the next sheet, that's, that cross-section there will be what I was just describing with the flush streets that is over here. And then if we go back up one, and then this new cross-section here is I think this is mislabeled, isn't that Jim? That should be right there, shouldn't it? That's, this, this is the cross-section four? It's pretty blurry, like at least from the distance that I'm standing at, it's pretty blurry. So there's a new cross-section for, for Coal Creek because we widened Coal Creek by twelve feet?
Jim Brostovich, Civil Resources, three, two, three, Fifth Street, Frederick. So this section on the left, I don't know, can you zoom in on this at all? Shows a little bit better, this is Creek View, this is the change where we widened Creek View, so this section is facing east towards US thirty-six. You'll see on the left side here, we've added the potential for diagonal parking along the, along the parks. Whereas we used to just have parallel parking in a sidewalk, we actually widened the right of way to accommodate diagonal parking here. So that's what the change is on this cross-section. So that, and so, and here's, here's Main Street showing the no curbs. The flexible parking spaces, parallel or diagonal or here, well, twenty-four feet, slow line, or regular travel lanes here. And if you can pan up Stephen to the, so the first cross-section, Creek View Way is right here, these two blocks. And then the Main Street is just these two blocks here. So the previous slide showed these other two cross-sections that you asked about, those haven't changed from the original PDA.
Thanks Jim. And Stephen, can you go down this? Okay, so that, that's the last page. So with that, I can, we can talk about that, take questions, or I can just go into addressing some of the comments that were made earlier?
Might be good to take questions if anybody has any at this time.
I did, I have a question on the, now that you're looking at widening or actually moving Creekside, to the north, or Creek View to the north. You would wind up and, and you're, and you're widening the right of way for the streets. You're pushing one of the, your relocation of one of the buildings would be on the north side of the street. How much is that encroaching on the park space?
Yes.
And, and how tall are you looking at, I mean, what, what is, what is your idea for that space? I understand it's restaurant?
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. Stephen, can we go, oh, you went back there. Sorry, when I stand here, this light turns on my eyes. The, so there, I think two things, sort of you were saying, the the line of where the previous park went, we sent an exhibit to staff that they can show here, so the, this is now showing the proposed relocated Creek View Way. And down here was the original, the PD one. And the original plan. And so over here was development land designated for, they call it parkside townhomes, front of the park. And this pink line here was, pink line was the existing, oh, that's the existing regulatory floodway. The blue line is from the approved, PD one. So this blue line here is the area in PD one. And one of the things that we had in PD one is we had a, a restaurant fronting the, the park. And so when we went to pushing over the, the street, we wanted to keep that restaurant. It's a two-story restaurant that, it's on the height limit. We'll, we'll look on, on the building mass diagram, but it's limited to two stories. And the, and so this is exactly the park plan as produced by the town's consultants. So this is exactly the park plan as produced by the town's consultants, we're showing how it all fits in there with these changes. So you can see, we didn't make any change here, but over here, we're going to have to put in a retaining wall. And what we also accommodated is the parking structure, what the, the park, the town's park consultants wanted a parking lot here, I said structure, should, a service parking lot here. And because we had residential, their plan showed a driveway coming in off of Marshall Road, which is not possible based on the grades and the, and the engineering. And so when we came back with these other changes, staff said, see if you can accommodate these requests of the, of the town's, you know, park committee. And so we did, the one thing the park committee didn't really comment on was the restaurant. So we've, we found this spot here and that's a fifty-foot deep restaurant, I think it's fifty by a hundred, something like that. And so we think that's a good enough depth, it'll be a narrow restaurant, but the goal of the restaurant would be to front the park and to get to maximize the views of the park. So we're hopeful that that, that still works, previously the restaurant was located right here. But this, so this show, this was put together and provided to staff to show that this, with these changes, the field dimensions and location would all stay the same.
Okay, I just, I wondered about the, the size of that building because I think it might have said in there that it could be up to four stories.
Uh, can you, Stephen, can you go back to the other exhibit and let's just make sure we have that right on the building mass diagram?
It's just hard to read.
It'll go down one, we'll go down one more.
It's not proposed to change, the height indicated there, it's one to four stories, this is Stephen, Town Staff. And it's a fifty-five foot max for this proposed location, so.
Can you go down to the next sheet over here? Let's zoom in on that, maybe that's something that needs to be bubbled, that, let's look at that.
So that's the cross hatching, and then over here it shows fifty-five feet, one to four.
Oh, I see, we're gonna say one to four stories. You know, we're happy to change that, I think that's a great point, you didn't really make that point, but indirectly you kindly made that point. Our intent, we, we will make that correction, that, that's absolute correction needs to be made. So, so Jim, we'll change that to twenty-five feet, one to two stories.
Twenty-five or thirty-two?
Yeah, I don't see, I mean, it's.
Yeah, what do you think we need, two stories? Probably do need thirty-two feet.
And then you have room for rooftop deck looking down onto the.
Right, okay, so if, if that's okay with the commission, we'll change that to the one to three stories category, thirty-two foot max.
Staff's memo against Stephen, Town Staff, staff's memo is requiring or recommending that condition nine, make that exact change, so.
And then along that same corridor, the, along the street with the parking the way it is, the corridor, the pedestrian corridor between the park and town center, do, do you envision any issues with blind spots for pedestrians crossing the street with the, you know, cars backing out? And, and that, that's one of my concerns is with the parking almost to the crosswalk that would be leading to the, down to the park two, I believe. Right there where, yeah, right where you're driving. You know, with, with your diagonal parking right there, will that cause any issues for pedestrians crossing with oncoming traffic? You know, people not being able to see when a car, I mean, presumably when a car is backing out, traffic would stop. But I have a concern with the width of the landing area on that crosswalk that, right there, yeah, just that, that if a car is backing out, kids running across, that we could have some concern with, you know, accidents there.
Well, so, so this is, I think twenty-two feet wide or twenty feet wide, Jim? We can look in the cross-section, this area here, the pedestrian promenade is forty-five feet wide. And, and then we have the ball bouts that you identified, so we don't see any concerns there, we think that we have plenty of room for pedestrian pathway. At this point here, we'll be narrowing, we're not going to maintain a forty-five foot wide crosswalk, we'll narrow it down to probably a ten foot crosswalk in, in the middle. And so we, we have plenty of room on either side. You know, certainly people don't have to be in the middle of the crosswalk stripe.
Sure, is there a potential to, to have that crosswalk actually raised higher than the, the normal grade of the street, just to? I mean, other than the issues with snow plows, but.
Uh, no, we could look at that, when we do an FDP out there, we'll have to look at all the details of how the drainage works, but that would be something that we would definitely consider.
We have the flush crosswalks in many locations where we've actually designed the streets. So we, that, that's something that we very much like and will look to do that.
Any other questions, comments?
Sorry, I have one more.
On the, the proposed area, but actually it's perfect, right there, the small block in block, is that six? Yeah, that small block, what is that, that's like the ninety foot, is that just the element that's going to be higher than everything else, or what does that delineate?
That's a carryover from the approved PD, PD one. And the intent of block six, that's our largest development block. And the intent is to have an architectural feature of a building. So a small portion of a building would, would be able to extend up to that height, and I believe that height is ninety feet.
Seventy-five.
Pardon me, seventy-five feet, so everything else is sixty-five, but they'll be, that's to indicate when we come forward with an FDP for the buildings in that block, that we'll try to, our design guidelines talk a lot about varying the roof heights and, and creating a, a, a interesting, attractive urban environment. And so the, that carryover is, it won't, for certain, it won't be in that exact location, but somewhere in this block, there'll be something, some element that extends out.
Yeah, I think, and I think Town Staff had made a recommendation on block six as well that, you know, we look at setbacks for, for height that leads out so solar, there aren't any issues with sunlight and solar getting into the town square, and I think that's a, it's a great idea and want to make sure that you guys really look into that one. And I think that's a, it's a great idea and wanna make sure that you guys really look into that one, when time comes.
Yeah, we, we very much agree with that.
That's it.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Yes, Commissioner Sotell. Just one other question. Um, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, and I'd like a little bit of clarification, maybe some direction on, um, the terminology used when regarding vested rights and the changes that are being made in this, um, PD.
Would you like my perspective or your town attorney's perspective?
Uh, maybe both.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, so, our, um, if I take the first swing at this, our, um, given that the magnitude of this project and our investment in the timeframe, we have a development agreement. And the development agreement, um, has a provision where, when we complete the first phase of improvements, of public improvements, which is Main Street and Superior Drive, that our, um, our rights to not have the town change these plans would exist for twenty years. We have a prelim, an, an initial right of five years. And then, with, once these improvements are completed, what's called FDP one, phase one, then that right will be extended for another, for an additional fifteen years for a total of twenty years. And so, every document that relates to that vested rights provision is labeled with the vested rights language.
There we go. Um, Randy's correct. There is the, the language for vested rights, um, on the plans per the development agreement between the town and the developer. There's specific process under state law and town code for approval of vested rights. Um, one step in the process is that the request has to come before Planning Commission. Planning Commission reviews, um, the, the plans, uh, that are requested to be subject to vested rights. And then, same thing before Town Board, and Town Board has to approve it. Normal period for vested rights, I believe, under state law is three years, although that's subject to, um, negotiation between, uh, the developer and, and the town on a specific project. So, here, the development agreement controls, uh, the period of vested rights. Randy is correct that, that it, it talks about five years as the, that initial period. And then, if, if the, um, public improvement requirements are met per the development agreement, that extends to twenty years. So, what's being proposed is that the same vested rights provisions under the development agreement, as written now, would apply to these changes. So, it wouldn't be an additional five-year initial period. These changes would be subject to that five-year period that started ticking when the development agreement was approved.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Goodson. Uh, did you wanna address the other issues that you identified?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Um, first, Mr. Ports, um, I talked to him on the side. The, uh, development agreement and the plans contemplate civic space. And we have, uh, through the negotiations, we committed to put ten million dollars towards the construction of civic space. And that allowed the town to select how much land, how much the money would be spent on park improvements and how much money would be spent on, um, on building improvements or providing a building, providing space. So, the civic space is broken down between the park improvements and, um, the indoor civic space. I think that's the, the, um, the defined term. And the town then executed that, they, they submitted a letter to us stating that they wish to pursue the indoor civic space as well as the, um, parks. And that allocated four million of the ten million to indoor civic space. And it requires us to plan for that and to work with the town on, on where we locate that. And our intention is for that to be as part of, um, the block six, all of the space together, somewhere between, um, the, an office building and a hotel so that the, um, those tenants, first of all, can use the space. But also, it's in a, um, in, in a very central location. We expect it would front onto the town plaza. And I, um, am pretty certain that the town staff and the town board have been, um, evaluating different options for that civic space. And, uh, the board members have, the staff presented to the board members a number of options for a library. I think they called it a library annex. And, uh, town staff and town board has been going and visiting other library annexes or, or small libraries throughout the region. That's something that's purely up, the programming is purely up to the town to program. And we're working with the town to, uh, to construct that civic space as part of the project. And I mentioned that to, to Mr. Ports. He, um, he was very happy to hear that there's a likelihood for that. Of course, that's not something we control and that's something that the town controls. As for Ms. Clark's comments, she's made these comments before. And, you know, there's a number of ways to respond to them. You know, I, first of all, I think she asserts pretty clearly that this annexation agreement is intended to benefit her and other property owners. Um, it explicitly does not. You have a, I noticed a trustee's, Lake Lasis.
That's right.
Um, Commissioner Lasis has a copy. It looks like you held up a copy of the, um, annexation agreement. So, kind of parsing some of her thoughts, one is there's an agreement that's been breached, and from our perspective, that's not the case. The, and then the second thing is that, um, grading was done that shouldn't have been done. And from our perspective, that's not the case either. Focusing on the solution, I appreciate her comment towards the end about focusing on the, the solution to her concerns. Much like the parks, the open space is subject to the town processing landscaping plans. And, um, the town, uh, staff asked us if we would accelerate the construction of those landscaping plans. And, uh, and I told them that we, we would. Um, depends on what cost that they're, um, you know, if they come back with a two-million-dollar plan, you know, that we'll have to talk about it. But our intent is to continue, be here to forever work together to create a great place. And if we need to accelerate the landscaping plans for that buffer area, um, we'll, we'll definitely work with the town to do that. There are logistical issues and construction issues. We don't have any water there. The main thing's water for landscaping. There's some other aspect that hasn't been extended to that location. The, um, there, there's, but having said that, and not to be, not to create an argument, I think it'd be helpful for everyone to read the annexation agreement. The annexation agreement is an agreement between the town and between us that expressly states that there are no third-party beneficiaries to the annexation agreement. And that the town had the ability to, um, modify that agreement as part of the PD, which, from our perspective, with the development agreement, um, the town did that. Having said that, nothing, no provision of the annexation agreement was not respected. Now, people's perspectives of what that annexation agreement would provide to them have clearly, uh, changed, or their perspectives have not been met. The, going through the process, though, we had a lot of dialogue with the neighbors, um, to our south in Waterford predominantly. And they continually asked, well, how, how high are these homes gonna be behind us? And, and, you know, how much of our view are they going to impact? And many of you remember, I know Mr. Sotell, Chairman Sotell, you were involved at the time with, and so, I had a lot of public hearings. I mean, we had, you know, dozens of community meetings and I think twenty total public hearings. And I remember one particular hearing where I was asked, you know, again, uh, you know, the height of these homes. And, and, you know, could you just remove that first row of homes so that we don't see the homes? I said, well, we could, but the row behind it, you'd see, you know? And the solution ended up being pushing the grading down. And so, the concept was, let's drop, the, the, can you drop the grading? We don't wanna see any of the homes. And so, here we are a couple of years later. We've spent a lot of money to do grading, to push the homes down so they won't see any homes. The two-hundred-and-fifty-foot separation, building to building, has been respected. It's in the plans. And it's absolutely sacrosanct, two-hundred-and-fifty feet. And so, you have two-hundred-and-fifty feet, plus we've pushed, we've done all this grading to push the homes down and designed the whole project to accommodate this significant drop so they won't see any rooftops. And even at one point, there was a conversation, well, we don't wanna look down into bedrooms. So, it's been designed, so it's far enough away and down far enough, you, you're not gonna look into bedrooms. You have to really stretch to, to look at the rooftops, most likely. So, now here we are, they're saying, and now we'd like you to move the homes, you know, further back or to, to do something else. And, um, you know, what I can tell you is, uh, the original PD, PD one, there is a preliminary grading plan that shows that grading. We spent a lot of money that we may not have had to spend to accommodate and to push all that grading down. We're gonna be doing the landscaping, but it's not landscaped now. We'll, we'll accelerate the landscaping. And the, uh, well, I guess the other thing I already said is that the, the annexation agreement, if, when you read it, there's nothing that says that the land can't be graded. And in fact, in the PD, not only does it show a grading plan, but in the PD number one, it describes in a couple of different locations, there's a comment that grading and, and trails are allowed in the open space. Because many people showed up, um, throughout the series of all the meetings, saying, we don't want anything in that open space buffer area. There was a lot of discussion about this open, open space buffer and what that meant. The town board and our, from our perspective, um, you know, they approved what they approved. The words say the grading's allowed. Now, we always have situations where things get built, and people say, gee, that's not what I expected to be built. As an aside, this, you know, maybe this is, is boring or not boring, I, I had the opportunity to sort of think about my urban development, uh, uh, concept when I worked in Europe for three years on, on urban developments and redevelopments and had the opportunity to work at this huge government building, uh, four and a half million square feet in Romania. And it was, um, they said it was under construction for fifteen years, um, like the, the church in Barcelona, uh, but not quite as long. And it was magnificent. And I said, well, why? And they said, well, the dictator couldn't really visualize things. And so, we'd build it and he'd say, nah, and, and they'd tear it down and start over. But, you know, that, that's just an aside. We can't do that here. We have a plan. We're working with the town on a landscaping plan. We're gonna do everything we can to make this space as good as it can be made. But I'll also tell you, you're gonna have, you know, five thousand residents in Superior Town Center looking up at whatever is created, in addition to eighteen homes looking down over it. So, hopefully, at the end of the day, there's, there's a balance of, of, um, of interests. And I hope the town doesn't, you know, allocate too much of the park improvement money to, to, you know, some people have said, put up giant retaining walls and, and things like that. So, um, that, that's as candid as I can be, um, as far as, um, so I think that's the best way to just believe that.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Goodson. Does anybody have any questions or comments in response? I guess I would just encourage you to continue to work in good faith as you have all along with the town staff and the board and the residents to come up with a good plan for everybody's sake. And, and I'm very confident that you all can arrive at something that'll be acceptable to everyone. So.
We plan to. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Do town staff have any comments you'd like to make on public hearings?
Stephen Williams, town staff, I'm available for any questions you guys have on any of the conditions or anything like that. The only clarification I guess I'd make, um, I'm not quite sure it was made today, maybe it was touched on, but, uh, uh, the direction of the town board about the buffer area was to, uh, come up with some solutions or some proposed, uh, options for that area. And, uh, my understanding is, uh, we'll have something to present or somebody, developer, either the developer or a third party will have something to present on, uh, December fourteenth. And, um, if you guys make a recommendation on this today, they'll be considering both, uh, those proposals, which would eventually result in an FDP for that landscape area and, uh, this PD amendment. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for town staff?
I, I do have a question, and I've been going over and over this in my mind, and I, I can't really figure it out. And I'm just wondering about the legalities of this. Are there issues that could put our town at risk if this isn't restored to, um, this small groups? Or, I shouldn't say small, this group's, um, concerns about the buffer zone and how it's landscaped and how it's treated?
This is Liz Cross, uh, town attorney. So, that's, that's a big question. And I would first recommend that most of that discussion should be had in an executive session, you know, with, for legal advice between the commission, um, and, and myself. The, the town board is aware and has been, um, town board and town staff ha- have been in discussion with our office about, um, how best to proceed under, um, you know, the, the plans that have been approved, the grading permit that has been issued and, um, you know, the annexation agreement, which has, has been discussed and, 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 um, you know, the buffer provisions and the annexation, uh, examined by Planning Commission when these original PD plans and FDPs, um, came through, you know, discussing what those terms of, of, um, the buffer provisions in the annexation agreement, um, how those should be interpreted and implied. So, the, the board is, um, aware of, uh, any legal issues that may surround, um, uh, solutions for restoring or, or proceeding with the work that's been done. And that is certainly being considered in, um, the proposed solutions that, uh, will be put before them. So, I guess, uh, the best answer to your question is that those issues, to the extent they exist, are, 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 um, you know, on, on the, the table for discussion. But I, I would, yeah, recommend discussing those in more detail.
And I know, I know that I'm gonna get the same answer to this question, but I'm gonna kinda ask it a different way. So, has there been a breach, I guess, or is that to the same point?
It's to the same point. Um, the, the parties to the annexation agreement as they now stand are the town and, uh, RC Superior as the, um, a signee of the agreement. Therefore, interpretation of, of the provisions, specifically the buffer provisions, are, as the terms of the agreement state, to be interpreted and applied by the parties. So, really, it's a point of negotiation and discussion between the town and RC Superior on how to apply the, the, the buffer provisions in the agreement. So, um, it's not really a question of whether there's been a breach of the agreement. It's more a question of how, how do the parties want to interpret language that was included in a contract that came into existence many years before this project?
Thank you. That's what I thought.
Okay. I hope that's helpful.
And then, just to follow up on Commissioner Stewart's, uh, question, then, what is the town's position with respect to the annexation agreement? And, and I guess, well, not necessarily with respect to the annexation agreement, but what is the town's, uh, position with respect to, uh, the obligations of RC Capital with respect to grading and, and the buffer? Is that to be determined based on, uh, decisions from the board?
Correct. I can't answer that at this time, and the town's position is determined by the board. And, and the commission can certainly, um, weigh in and make recommendations on what that position should be, to the extent that the commission feels it's appropriate. I would like to do so, but, but, yeah, I can't answer that question for you now.
I guess one, one final, uh, question. Has there been any indication of problems developing on any of the citizens' properties with respect to settling or anything like that occurring on their properties from the grading?
Hey, Stephen, can you better answer that?
Um, Stephen Williams, town staff, uh, not to my knowledge, there hasn't. But I don't know if, yeah, not to my knowledge.
So, they're primarily, I didn't, they're primarily interested in the visual more than any other. In other words, how this buffer zone looks to them looks, period.
I don't, I don't know that I wanna comment on what I, you know, presume they, uh, what they're, what they're interested in. You know, I think that they have one interpretation of what that buffer area was, was to look like or one expectation of what it was to look like. And, uh, they brought it, they raised the issue, and the town board has given the direction that we'll look into it further and see whether or not we can come to a, a. that we'll look into it further and see whether or not we can come to a, a better resolution on it, or a clearer resolution on it.
Sort of unanswerable questions present.
So that's, that's just one other thing. That's, um, been very helpful, so thank you for that. However, I, I'm still struggling with this part of having the emotional ties that are at play here versus the business side and moving forward with this development, and at the same time, somehow addressing the, the high intensity emotional pieces that are coming up and that I, um, anticipate will, um, come up. And for me, that's going to be the difficult part in terms of making a decision for, um, recommending, um, this or not. And I'm just maybe wanting some direction, um, in terms of, uh, is there any advantage to holding up this development and holding up progress, or, um, denying this, um, PDA?
Uh, Stephen Williams, town staff, again, um, I don't know that I can provide you with any direction or, um, but I could provide you with some context, um, and just kind of some reminders, you know, this is a PD application, so it's a zoning application, we're not approving any development, uh, by, by making a, a recommendation on this proposal. Whatever is recommended on this proposal will lead to final development plans for each of the blocks and for the new streetscapes, or in the case of, you know, Main Street, a final development, uh, plan amendment, uh, FDP one, phase one, uh, to redesign Main Street. So there's no development that's necessarily resulting from, uh, this recommendation, it's just, uh, a change to the actual zoning.
Mr. Goodson?
Thank you. I just would like to respond to that also, because we've heard the same thing, you know, hold them up, hold them up, make them stop. Um, we have a lot of money invested, a lot of time invested, we feel very strongly about creating a great place. We think the original PD plan, PD Plan One, is a really good project. We think this would be better. But, you know, if, if, for whatever reason, if the town doesn't want to approve this one, don't, and we'll, we'll proceed with what we have. Um, we, we think this, um, helps accommodate some of the things the town's been wanting to achieve. We think it's a somewhat better plan. Um, and that's why I just don't get this idea of, you know, just hold them up and make them stop, because we have an approved project, we're not going to stop, we're going to keep moving forward. We are waiting for, to, to let our contracts on Main Street, um, pending this approval. We have, we know what an approved plan would be, we know how we'd change it. But if it's not approved, you know, we'd, it's not like we'll wait, we'll, we're going to go forward. If it's not approved, we're going to go forward with what we have. If it is approved, we'll go forward with this plan if you think it's better. But, uh, the plan we have is a very good plan also. And so often, I, you know, we are always asked, what would make this plan better and things like that? And we always want to pursue and see if there's things that, that can be better, but, um, a lot of times, you know, you just don't know. You just kind of have to move forward. What, what I know is not better is stopping and waiting. And, and so that's not an option for us, and I hope it's not an option for, for the town.
A real quick question, can I ask? So I think, I think this new plan is, is much better than the original plan. I know you think that, you, you said that the original plan is good and you would, you could move forward with that. I think this plan is a, a much better plan for the town. And I just have maybe one question for you, is when, when you're talking about, um, you know, all the meetings and you talk to the people up on the hill, and you wind up grading lower to accommodate view, view lines, how, and you may not remember, but how much did you go down in grading to accommodate those, those requests? Based off of what you would have possibly done?
More than two stories. Yeah, probably about twenty feet, about two stories.
Okay. And so that, as a result of doing that lower grading, the steepness of the buffer zone is what you were trying to accommodate? I mean, you had to, you had to grade down to, to avoid a retaining wall, or, I'm just trying to understand why, why they're grading down and, and everything.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have, um, on this exhibit, if, if you could zoom in, Stephen, I can show you that the height limit down here is a, it's the, um, one to two stories, twenty-five foot max. So we graded down about twenty, twenty-five foot here. We looked at this, um, the references in the annexation agreement are to a setback, building setbacks. And, um, so what we've done is the buildings are set back, you can see there's no height allowed here, this is fifty feet, and this is, uh, two hundred, two hundred feet here. And then, of course, their homes are further back, I think a minimum of another fifty feet. And so there, somebody referenced three hundred feet, there's three hundred feet between the nearest building, the, the pinch point here. Um, and so that was our solution to the overall challenges that were, that were raised. And that, that's what is approved in the PD amendment number one.
I hate to be stupid, but sometimes it happens. Where is the buffer zone?
The buffer zone is, um, in the annexation agreement, there's a reference to a buffer zone that incorporates, well, there's two references to buffer zones, but what we're talking about now is a buffer zone from here
Uh-huh.
to here.
I see.
And that, that's broken down into a, um, a no-build zone,
Okay.
or building setback
Okay.
and to a, um, open space buffer. The open space buffer is the heading of the section that describes it as an area that will provide for a separation of the uses. It, nowhere does it say that this is to remain as, as native open space. I actually think the, the, the heading says native open space or naturalized open space or something like that. And, uh, there's a section in the annexation agreement that says the headings are not definitions in themselves, they're just headings for references and are not to be used to, to add to the interpretation of what is within that paragraph. And so there's a paragraph, and so there's that paragraph that, that describes naturalized open space, and then it says what it's, what it should be. It does not say it can't be graded, um, and it does not say, it just says that it should be planted with naturalized materials and things like that. All of the, those, um, provisions are accommodated in
Okay.
and will
Thank you.
exist.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
When, when did the grading actually occur in this particular area? And what, what sort of investment of, of time and resources was it?
Well, the, the whole area was graded from about May through August, uh, September, I think through August of this year, um, the grading was done, and now we're doing, um, underground utilities and things like that.
So it wasn't graded separately from the, the, the rest of the site, it was all graded at the same time?
Correct. We had to take, um, we had to get rid of that dirt. And so part of what's happened is the, um, the planning area, two areas have been raised ten to twelve feet or so, and so the dirt, if you go out there, very, very little of the dirt has left the site. It's just been, uh, pushed around so that there's a gravity grade, so that we could really afford to accommodate this and to, to get rid of the dirt.
Thank you.
And it was all done pursuant to a grading permit issued by the town pursuant to the PD amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my understanding, I mean, my thought on this is that I understand the, the concern and the, and from the
Residents.
from the residents. And however, I just don't feel like, I mean, this is the, the core part of, this part of this that we're approving tonight, is a core part of a town center. And there's, and I feel that, you know, town staff, um, the board, um, developer, all together, they need a little bit of time to work this out, but I don't think that this should be, gets held up. I mean, there, there's things in the future that if there aren't agreements and we have issues, then we can look at it in the future. But I think, you know, for this being a core element, a great core element of this entire project, I, I just think it needs to move forward.
Be approved.
Maybe as a, as a point of order, um, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing if there are no more questions for the developer staff, and then we can have a discussion amongst ourselves. Fair enough. Close the public hearing on that. Commissioner Reese?
Can I, can I just make one interjection or actually a question?
Yeah.
Was there an opportunity for public comment that was made?
Oh, well, we, we will reopen it and then offer that opportunity.
And I, I also know, I, I think there was public comment that was submitted, um, by email or letter, um, I just want to make sure that's in the record, um, and that's before commission.
Yes, to your point, I think we received some emails from, from people requesting that their public comment be incorporated into the record, and, uh, we'll, we'll submit those and let the, let the minutes reflect that.
Okay.
Is there any additional public comment during the public hearing? Earring nine? Public hearing's closed.
Thank you, Liz.
I, I'd just like to do that.
We can talk.
We can talk.
May for super.
I, I guess, at the risk of speaking out of turn, I'll follow up on what Commissioner Reese has to say. And, and I would agree, uh, wholeheartedly with, with his comments in that, you know, I'm not insensitive to the comments of Ms. Clark and, and the neighbors who she's speaking on behalf of. But I also think that there's a, a remedy available, and there's, there are channels available for us to deal with that, and, and for them to be heard and to work with our town staff, and with the developer to come up with a satisfactory solution. And if, for whatever reason, that's not possible, then there are additional channels that can be pursued. But personally, I'm not in favor of holding up, uh, holding up the development, I'm not in favor of, uh, not taking action on what appears to be a good, uh, amendment to the planned development plan, and I think we should move forward. Any other comments?
I, I agree. Uh, I think a tremendous amount of, you know, time and energy has been spent, uh, improving the, the planned development. And, uh, obviously, the, the town staff has weighed in on it, we looked at it, the developer went through all the various improvements, and I think, you know, the sum total of all those improvements is we're going to have a better town center than, uh, we would have had if we were just going forward on the earlier, uh, acceptable plan. Um, I do think that, uh, the annexation agreement, um, and the concerns of the residents are important to consider. However, I think it's important to also recognize that, uh, while the residents are certainly affected by living next to a development, they are not parties to that annexation agreement. And, uh, the annexation agreement does have language that says there are no third-party beneficiaries to that agreement. So if the agreement is between the town and now the developer, um, it's not for anybody else to raise, uh, a potential breach other than the town or the developer. And, and as, you know, Mr. Goodson explained, you know, there's also reference in, in the annexation agreement that, you know, the captions are inserted for convenience purposes and not to define or specify terms. Uh, so I think what we have here is, you know, some people reading an agreement and interpreting it one way when it reasonably can be interpreted in another way. But at the end of the day, it's an agreement between two parties, and it's not something for somebody else to say, you breached an agreement that I'm not a party to. So, so that being said, uh, I also appreciate what Mr. Goodson said about the concerns that the residents had with respect to the view shed and, uh, the amount of, you know, money and labor spent grading that area to accommodate the view shed. And, um, to me, I, I, I think that what we have here is, uh, a reasonable, uh, a plan, a very good plan. And, um, we've got a commitment from the developer to work with the town on, you know, landscaping the area and making the, the whole town center as, as good as it can be. Uh, so with those points, uh, I think it makes sense for us to vote in favor of the planned development plan amendment number three, uh, subject to the additional comments that town staff has given us.
Any further comments?
I, I would agree with what's been said so far. I just want to comment that when you have people that are affected by an agreement but not drafting, not parties to drafting it, then you're dealing with expectations that can be all over the place. And if they're not using this base agreement as a reference point, then that's how it's going to be. But I think we have to move with the problem, with the program. And this is a good thing, and we should keep on chugging.
Anything further?
Yes, I, uh, I also agree. Um, and I think that it would be good for us to, um, approve, um, this amendment, um, simply because it's very good plans. Um, it does meet our needs and, um, kind of cleans up a lot of the areas that needed to be addressed in, um, um, older plans. Um, it gives us more flexible space, and, um, I've kind of said this all along, I, you know, I think that it really does, um, prove that it could become the, the, the crown jewel of our community. And, um, I see that with these plans, I think they are, they're, they're very good. To my point earlier, though, um, I kind of agree with Bobby said, there's this real emotional aspect to, um, what's happening and what's going on. And I don't think that it necessarily has anything to do with us moving ahead with these plans and, um, um, going forward. So I, I, I took him in support of that.
Anything else?
No, can I read the resolution?
Commissioner Malia, any comments?
Yes, I, uh, I echo everyone's sentiments about the, uh, the proposal in front of us. The, um, one thing I, I would say is that I think the, the care and concern that, that RC Superior's taken to review these plans and make these changes and make these suggestions will lend itself to RC Superior also paying attention to the voices of the town and residents as, as best you can, and reaching an agreement with any sort of disagreement that may come up. And so I think with your, the effort and the, the thoughtfulness you've put into redesigning this, I think you can carry over through the rest of the project. Another call to that.
And we appreciate the time you've taken to explain it all to us.
Commissioner Eaton? Make a resolution?
I will make a resolution. Okay. Resolution number PC dash four, series two zero one five. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of a third amendment to the planned development, preliminary development plan for Superior Town Center and case number PDA dash ZDP dash two zero one five dash two.
Thank you. Commissioner Eaton, there's a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second? Commissioner Momarts? Are those in favor, so signify? Opposed? Unanimous? Motion's carried.
Okay.
Okay, staff announcements and Mrs. Lanias? Any staff announcements?
I was just going to ask a question. Uh, in terms of the staff, is that detailed enough? Any suggestions, uh, for us, or was it clear? There's a lot, I thought there was, Steve did a lot of work on this. There's a lot of information there, and I thought it encapsulated everything that, you know, was being proposed by the developer. So if, if we're on the track there, then you can expect that on the next one also.
And if I understood you correctly, Fred, you're asking whether the, the suggested edits that Stephen has made, that staff has made, whether they're sufficiently detailed?
Right, or just the report itself in general. You know, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot here.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I want to make sure everyone is comfortable with what we're doing.
I mean, I thought
I thought it was excellent.
Yeah, that was excellent.
I, I really appreciated all the detail and obviously the, the time spent going through all of this. It obviously makes all of our lives a lot easier, knowing that we've got competent staff going through it and, and putting forward all the efforts to, to, uh, you know, properly fly-spec this thing to make sure that all the i's are, are dotted and t's are crossed. So I thought it was, it was great. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, and I actually marked up all my drawings that were delivered to my house, and then I pulled out this document. then I pulled out this document and started reading it. I'm like, it was all right here. I, I shouldn't have even had to mark up my drawings, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Good job. Any other staff announcements?
Uh, none, other than, uh, I guess what's gonna be on, um, the town, uh, town board meeting for the twenty-third is supposed to have a concept plan review, uh, for, uh, medium-density residential property in original town. Um, so we'll be preparing that, uh, concept plan memo this week and presenting it to the board next week.
Okay, thanks. Any further business to come before the meeting? In case, we're adjourned.
I knew that was coming.
We're timed.